All right, we are now recording, so now we can really get started. Okay, so let's start with masks and facial coverings. And most of that can be referenced on page 22 of the Michigan Safe Schools, Michigan Return to School Roadmap. Again, those links are in the chat area. Now I'm just going to resend them because sometimes they don't show up after you've joined and after I post them. So it seems like everyone's here now. So as it pertains to face masks, facial coverings and masks, and again, if you want to put questions or comments in the chat box as we go through this, that would be great. All staff members will be required to wear a mask at all times. Facial coverings must cover the mouth and nose and be secured beneath the chin. All students will be required to wear masks in public places such as the hallway, the bathroom, on the bus, etc. Students in grades, students in grades six through eighth are required to wear a mask at all times. Third through fifth will not have to wear a mask, although they'll all be in the middle school building. Third through fifth will only have to wear masks in their classrooms, but you will have to wear a mask as you enter the building and exit. Students in preschool through second at the elementary campus, again, will have to wear masks in those public places as they enter the school and as they exit the school. But once they get into their classrooms, their masks will be able to be taken off. We did just order a bunch of lanyards for the students, so they'll be able to clip their mask right on their lanyard and then put their lanyard on so that those masks are not being stuffed in pockets or backpacks or just hanging out in the hallways, but they'll be on their person's. They're going to get very used to having those things, as we all have, I'm sure, over the summer. We are looking into, we're looking into face shields and what that means for staff and students as an option. But right now, the guidelines on page 22 talk specifically about the cloth masks and how the homemade facial coverings must be washed daily and disposable masks must be disposed at the end of each day. So that's where we're at with the masks and facial coverings. Again, if you have any questions kind of on that piece of it, a lot of those can be answered on page 22, or you can put something into the chat if that's not clear yet. Again, right now, for those of you who just joined, we're kind of just going through the town hall questions that were submitted on the survey because we want to address those and then we'll open it up for dialogue. You know, what people's feelings are, if they have questions that still are unanswered. Just more taking the team approach of kind of using this as a good collaborative exercise for our All Saints Academy community. As far as distancing and spacing, pre-K to five will remain self-contained as much as possible with specials teachers coming into the homeroom as best as we can. Lunch will be in the classrooms, recess will be outside. No masks are required outside if they're just with their own class. So we're going to try to provide as many of those opportunities as possible, especially when you're outrunning and it's going to be hot in August and even in September. Giving those kids a chance to breathe a little bit fresh air is going to be good, distance, of course. Desks will be as far as out, spread out as far as possible. Someone asked about possibility that larger classes will be split, and that's what we just recently did with first grade, which if you didn't read the announcement on third grade moving over to the middle school, that's kind of the idea there is we had 25 students in one class. When we distanced the desks, there were just really no way that that class could go on as we envisioned it to in a first grade classroom. So with all the space being used up at the elementary campus, combined with just having more space at the middle school and allowing us to pod those students a little bit more, that's what kind of prompted with the distance and spacing. So we move on to some of the health and sanitary stuff. We were going to be relying on parents to symptom check their children in the morning before coming to school. We'll, of course, be cleaning according to the required protocols. Our maintenance staff has been really kind of catching up on what their duties are going to be. We've been ordering the proper sanitizing equipment and chemicals to make sure our students are safe and we can wipe everything down appropriately. We're going to keep the windows open as much as possible to kind of continue to ventilate that air. Obviously, we'll be checking symptoms as they come up or if we're noticing things, if students aren't feeling well and being able to take temperatures down in the office. And if symptoms do arise, we'll be calling home. You know, of course, isolating that student away from everybody and then calling home so that you can get that child checked out. There are a lot of questions on testing protocols and what happens with positive testing. So in terms of the Michigan Return to School Roadmap, that kind of prompts you to go to your local health department. So that's why we've included that second document on there, which is the School Teachers and Administrators COVID-19 Toolkit. So I'm not going to go kind of, there's a ton of questions. And I'm glad that we sent this out when we did, but also glad that we scheduled it unbeknownst to us, that this information just came out Thursday to the school. So we do have a little bit more clarity. There's a ton of questions, what will happen if and when staff test positive? What will happen if, when a student in the same grade as my child tests positive? What are the policies if there are positive cases in the school? Will they need to quarantine for 14 days? Is there a plan in place of students, etc., etc., etc.? So I would just encourage you, they lay it all out very well with school scenarios with action steps. I believe there are six different scenarios. Talks about kind of some of the flow maps that happen. For example, a student and staff person within the school is confirmed to have COVID-19. The student and staff person and all household members of the student staff person are immediately excluded from school. The confirmed positive student staff person must isolate at home. It talks about the difference between quarantining, isolating in the back appendix here. The student staff person must be excluded from school until three days with no fever, without the use of fever-reducing medication, and respiratory symptoms have improved, and 10 days since the symptoms first appeared. So household class members, classmates and teachers of the quarantine student staff person who are close contacts are excluded for 14 days after their last date of contact. So again, in this document, they've got, you can see on page five, the contact tracing in the school setting. So we'll be doing a lot of contact tracing if those things arise in the classrooms and just following all these protocols. So that's why I thought it was important for you to have all this documentation so you can kind of look there to see what exactly will happen and how. Moving on to, a lot of questions arose around remote learning. Going back to that first document of the Michigan Safe Schools, we're currently in phase four, but anything phase one to three will require that schools are shut down and we all are remote learning. So it will look pretty similar to what happened in the spring, although there will be some obvious changes just from knowing what we learned as educators on what works best when we are remote. We were really fortunate to have Canvas at All Saints Academy. We were the only elementary school to have Canvas. In fact, all the diocesan schools, elementary schools are moving to Canvas this year. And I think we helped kind of set that example of a really good format to use. So we'll all be in remote learning if we're in phase one through three, which we're in phase four right now. And in terms of remote learning, we're working on the plan to have in place if we're told schooling for everyone needs to be remote. So that's the, the details are kind of being refined right now with the staff of middle school and elementary staff and what changes you might see. For example, when we were in the spring, there were a few scheduled times that we were meeting. You might see a more succinct schedule of the day as we learned kind of how important that was to have those good routines and procedures set in place. If a student is homesick, we will use Canvas and teachers to work to keep them learning. So whether a student is sick or even has been exposed to someone in the home and they can't return to school, that's where we're going to continue to really leverage Canvas and provide them some remote experiences that way. And we don't have the resources to offer a fully remote program alongside face-to-face programming. So this is something that you probably see more in the public schools that have to offer a remote option for those people who just aren't comfortable sending their children. We really don't have the resources right now to say, this group of students can take on this remote experience. But what we can do is, if students are sick, still have access to Canvas and allow them to participate that way. And of course, checking in with staff members and making sure we keep those students caught up. So again, that's on remote learning. With childcare, things will pretty much look the same in offering before and after childcare for students. We won't have, we won't have childcare during the day for K-8 students. That will be something, you know, when we have snow days, for example, K-8 childcare is available. That's not something that will necessarily be available to our students if, for example, the entire third grade class has to go home because there's a couple cases in there. That would move to a remote experience, similar to what we saw in the spring. We wouldn't be able to bring any of those third graders into school during that day because they would have to be away. But we're going to do a lot in terms, again, if someone does test positive that goes into childcare, it will be about contact tracing and really talking to the local health department about, you know, what protocols we need to put in place from there. Okay, there's a couple of questions about finances and will tuition rates change? Just like last year, tuition will not change. You know, 85% of our budget goes towards paying staff members and teachers, and they're still going to be working as hard, if not harder, under a remote situation. And we're still going to do our best to provide a valuable educational experience. I will be very, very honest with you, and I can speak as a parent of students at All Saints Academy. What my daughter Brace experienced remotely was not the same as what she experienced when she was sitting in Mrs. Bowman's classroom. That's not to say Mrs. Bowman didn't do an amazing job. And as I learned from so many other teachers or parents about their teachers and just saw firsthand a glimpse into what they were doing on Canvas and listening to people's experiences, they had great experiences for what it was, under the current circumstances. We hope that students can be at school and stay healthy. But if we do move into another situation where we are remote, we're still going to offer a very, very valuable educational experience and we need, we need those tuition dollars so that we can pay teachers and we can keep operating. I was very, very pleased that we didn't have anybody question or stop paying tuition last spring because of the situation we were in. We had some parents who couldn't because their finances were affected by COVID-19. And we were able to help support those families. And the Diocese is helping to support those families now with the new tuition assistance plan from the bishop and scholarship opportunities. But nobody said, you know, this wasn't worth it and I'm going to stop paying. And we're going to continue to go with that. We had some miscellaneous questions, some athletic stuff and speaking about band and specials. We're going to continue to have recess and mass, although some procedural changes will happen within the guidelines. Class parties, asking that only individual packaged items for small class celebrations without visitors would happen. Money collection is something that we're going to look into with the business office. We certainly have ways to kind of stop cash from coming into the school and handling of that cash when it comes to dollar gene days and just paying for things like that. Always going to try to get outside, it's a great option, especially in the fall. So we're going to try to do that as much as possible, get those kids out, breathe in fresh air. Right now, it looks like sports are going to try to go on as normal, although again, within some guidelines. It sounds like there are any indoor practices being allowed. So it might just be football and soccer and cross-country and volleyball probably will be moved to the spring with basketball in the winter. But we will be hearing more. In fact, we had a Graciac meeting slated for this upcoming Monday that was just recently canceled because we're waiting to hear some stuff coming out from the MHSAA. And then with band and specials, specials are permitted and guidelines are being developed. Band specifically with music, obviously blowing into instruments. We want to hold band as a placeholder in the schedule. So we're hoping to do some sort of music education of some kind to hold that spot. There's a whole study coming out with band. Mr. Palmary, of course, as passionate as you know he is, was one of the first to kind of reach out and talk about what it might look like to slowly move into the actual playing of instruments. We need, we need these specials not only for a well-rounded education for our students, but it does give the teachers breaks in their day so that they can spend time putting things into Canvas so that they can spend time reaching out to six students so they can spend time kind of planning for what comes next. And all of these specials are an important part of just building a well-rounded schedule. We'll look at virtual lessons, but we have to look at how that plays into, you know, contracts with the JRPS teachers and how that might affect there. So that was, that was pretty much a rundown of kind of the main questions grouped together. I do see some questions in the chat that I'll try to quick get the resources up for those to be able to answer. Right now, in terms of registration, we've got 27 kindergarteners, which will be divided into two classes, 25 first graders, which will be divided into two classes. We've got 20 second graders, 20 third graders, 16 fourth graders, nine fifth graders, 13 sixth graders, 12 seventh graders and 22 eighth graders. So I see some questions in there about class sizes and square footage. What's the square footage for the rooms? So Jamie, what we're looking at is trying to provide each student with six feet of distance. That's not a requirement, that's a strong recommendation. So again, we're trying to space them out as much as we can. Most of our classrooms, we can do that with the amount of students. 20 is kind of right around that threshold. So the students with, the classes with 20 students in there are close to it, but most of those classes are under 20, so we should be good there. Let me see if I can see. Positive cases in high schools considering older siblings? That again comes, I mean, if it's, if it's the actual older sibling, obviously that student will have to isolate and quarantine. I'm not sure right now, Becky, what that looks like in terms of, you know, degrees of separation. So if your sibling was in a class of somebody somewhere, how that filters down? We'll probably have to get some work guidance from that, from the local health department. But I'm guessing that if there was something that happened at West Catholic or Catholic Central, I'm sure they would take into account siblings and how that triples down. You know, it's probably going to be a little bit clearer, more clear from, you know, in a, in a public school district where everyone might be in Cedar Springs and a little bit tighter. But I don't know how that will be, how will be effective if something happens in the, in the high schools. But again, I'm sure we'll get more guidance from the, from the Diocese and certainly from the Health Department from there. I don't know if you have any other kind of follow-ups to that. Yeah, same thing is, so handle with the public high schools considering older siblings don't just go to CC or West. Again, I guess we're going to have to look for guidance from the Health Department and how kind of that contact tracing goes and how many degrees of separation goes into that. That's a great question. I don't know what, what kind of the protocol is if you happen to be in a restaurant, for example. I know that they've been doing some contact tracing, like if you swept your credit card, like how low that, or how many, how low the totem pole goes in terms of like reaching people and then how much quarantine you're isolating you need to do based on the possibility of running into somebody. But that's a really good question. Okay, let me go back up. So if a child is ill, is a COVID test required? If they're showing symptoms of COVID-19, we really encourage the test. I'd have to look to see if it's, you know, required by law. You know the answer to that one.
There is a, there is a whole protocol for a child that's sick that does not get tested for the number of days after new symptoms have subsided and symptoms have started to recover that you can return to the classroom. The negative test would allow you to return a little bit sooner than that. But there's, I believe there's like a 72-hour window after no new symptoms and no symptoms with medication.
Then Mr. Heckman, do you want to talk about your question? What effect will a negative test result after some kind of exposure have on the isolation timeframe? So are you kind of showing that that student has like an antibody test? Or you're referring to that, or maybe you can explain that a little bit more? But let me unmute you real quick, or can you unmute yourself, sorry?
See, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, my question is, is basically if you have like, for example, a sibling situation, you're supposed to quarantine. What if, you know, your student comes back and gets a negative test? Will they be able to come back faster than that 14 days? Assuming they've never had any symptoms or anything like that.
Sure. So question, and the frequently asked question is number 18. If this doesn't answer directly, I can maybe look into that for you better. But it says, should students get an antibody test to prove that they already had COVID-19 and thus do not need to quarantine if they're exposed again? And the answer to that is no. Students who have already tested positive for COVID-19 will need to quarantine again because we're still learning about the virus and there's a possibility of reinfection. So I guess that's not really answering your question.
Right.
That's a really good question. I will look into that one because.
You can get your test results with basically two business days.
Right.
You know, if you can get your kid back to school sooner.
Yep, yeah, as long as they've tested that. Let me find that one out for you. That's a great. We're all in this together and we're learning, I feel like, at the same pace for a lot of this stuff. Mr., do you want to talk about eighth grade with their schedule being split into classes?
Eighth grade remains split into two groups, which is similar to last year. So they're just going to continue in two slightly parallel tracks through their daily schedule. And I think, I think when Michael talked about the rotation for K through five, we didn't mention six through eight. Six through eighth grade, because they have so many teachers, we're still working on the dynamics of either having them stay within their homeroom and having teachers travel to them or the scheduling of transitioning in between and having time for cleaning. Should we move students into different rooms for some of the classrooms that have material-specific devices like a science lab or that type of a thing? So they're still going to be in their hallway, probably more contained into a homeroom than normal. But what the dynamics of switching either teachers or students looks like, we're still working with, within the schedule. But eighth grade stays separate still.
So some of the things that we're talking about in terms of kind of a specific plan to what day-to-day things will look like are, and we're still working on those with teachers at both campuses because, you know, they're different physical spaces. But are things like, you know, having multiple entrances and exits for the students so they're not bottlenecking? How exactly lunch and recess looks? Lunch will not be served in the lunchrooms, will be, they'll be eaten in classrooms. Then the recess schedule, what that looks like? Again, I think I said, for the most part, specials teachers will be coming into classrooms, homeroom classrooms. We're going to kind of look at what the, the school week or school day looks like and kind of think about everything and anything and what changes need to be made in terms of their daily routines. Again, the lanyard thing, for example, came from a parent today. Just had happened to talk to them about, oh, what do you, what do you think about the masks? And that idea came up, and I thought it was a great idea because we had thought, gosh, where are these kids going to put their masks at any given time? So we continue to pick up best practices. Anything that you all maybe have seen at other schools do, we were hoping that this would be a time for kind of just brainstorming and dialogue and thinking about whatever's on your mind. A couple other questions. How will allergies be handled? Becky, do you have anything specific about that? I don't think they would. I don't think they would.
Yeah, so like I will use myself. So I have seasonal allergies, so I'm constantly sniffling, coughing, sneezing, you name it. All trace that. So I'm just curious how, what'll happen when students have allergies and are coughing, sneezing, runny nose, that whole thing, are they considered symptomatic? Therefore, it's an issue or like what documentation is needed on that?
We are hopeful that the health department is following up the first document they gave us with a symptom document for that reason and a number of other ones. Because we've we've talked about allergies and how to handle that, but we're hoping that they're going to give us just a little bit more of some of those scenarios so we can problem solve and and figure that out. What did I miss, Michael?
No, I think that was good. That's that's exactly what you and I were talking about earlier today was, you know, the minute that a kid happens to clear his throat or her throat in the middle of class, is it going to be, go down to the office and you're being isolated and now you have to go get a a COVID test? But that's when Abby let me know that there was a document possibly coming out to say, okay, here are some symptoms, you know, are are these symptoms in combination with others? You know, if a kid is sitting there really, really coughing, you know, obviously, we probably want to check their temperature. And then if they've got a high fever, that would be something that would trigger us to put them in isolation and and contact parents and hopefully go get a test. But I think I think we'll have to to wait and see that some of the guidance from that because there are going to be a lot of other illnesses that are similar in symptoms, but it doesn't automatically mean that they're COVID positive positive or need to get tested. But again, I don't know that for sure, so I'm going to glean on on the experts. And I and I don't know if any of you have experience with that or could help answer that question. Looks like there's a question on the school being clean and or disinfected and what methods will be used. So there's a whole checklist, Mrs. Reed, that that we're going to go through with our maintenance team. We have gone through to make sure we've got all the necessary and up to code chemicals. So anytime students are changing rooms, that's one of the reasons why we're going to try to keep them in one room because we we're going to try to keep that as as easy as possible. Sorry, I just let someone in. So that we're not running around wiping down a ton of a ton of seats because I don't think we'd be able to keep up with the staff that we have. But certainly, you know, we are, we already do a lot of cleaning with even prior to this with in our preschool rooms because they have their hands on a lot of toys and things like that. So if you look over on page thirty-three and thirty-four, it talks a lot about the facilities checklist, and those are the things that we're going to kind of will be abiding by. I'm trying to trying to become an expert in everything. It's taking some time.
So to that point, when we update the handbook, some of these charts and and things are going to be added as an appendix in the ASA handbook for reference. The maintenance staff has already created their list for us of the products that we use, of their daily cleaning routine. And then we have, sitting next to that, the required things for opening that we just need to schedule and confirm who's responsible for the midday door handle or table checks, et cetera.
I'm curious to hear from any of you, just kind of your level of comfort sending kids back, like, you know, what what's keeping you up at night? What are we forgetting about or or missing or just anything? Any commentary from you all? And how you're how you're handling this, how your kids are doing, you know, how your if your kids are nervous, if your kids are are scared, are they just anxious to get back? Are they willing to wear a mask just to see their friends again? Anyone wants to unmute the mics and just chime in a little bit? Would love to hear from you.
And then we have a couple more questions in the chat box, too.
Oh, sorry about that. That's what scrolling is for. Oh, we have a ton. I'm sorry.
Want me to read them to you?
No, I can see them now. If anyone wants to chime in or like get caught up on some of these questions. Okay, yep, Laura, we talked a little bit about trying to get outside as much as possible just because the kids need to be out in the in the fresh air. Certainly, you know, if if not just for lessons, being able to take some breaks, some extra recess times to to get out and just feel like kids again. They they need that. But there definitely should be some opportunities to go out and and do some lessons or journal or or just read and take a break so that they can space out and not be in in the rooms as much. We are still planning on an August nineteenth start date. I think the only factors that might change that is if we regress into phase three or below. And I that is one of the questions that I brought up with our diocesan team. And because they're really focused on having a cohesive schedule with the other schools, that's not, there's not a lot of wiggle room in that. But I agree with both Jill and Mary. It would, it would be great to kind of see what schools are doing first and and learn some lessons from them. But the August nineteenth start date is is when we'll we'll be starting. Eighth grade visits to high schools, I haven't heard much, but I would anticipate those being suspended until.
I can add that both of the Catholic high schools developed a virtual tour and then developed meetings virtually with counselors for placement for high school. I don't know the specifics of what the public high schools have put in place, but I imagine it's going to be similar. They're going to have guidelines for what they can offer. And then we will, like we always do, share whatever they send out to us to share with eighth grade families.
Mister Rolf, we are relying on parents to be do doing screening of children. If we do have visitors into the building, that's when we will probably be administering temp checks. But to begin, those volunteers, visitors are really going to be few and far between. We do have hand sanitizer stations installed as well as just going to have a lot of hand sanitizer just bottles around so we can make sure we we can keep those hands sanitized. So so the thing about having the resources for every class virtual, what what I mean by that is, you know, as a as a single Catholic school with not a ton of kids in each grade, if one or two or three or or one per grade even chose to do their hybrid or or some type of hybrid model, that would leave just a handful of kids needing needing a full-time teacher really to respond to those those needs in that environment. If you're at a place like Northview, for example, you might have thirty or forty kids choosing that option where that's going to take less students or or take more students out of the classrooms, meaning you'd need less teachers and you could redirect one of those teachers to kind of be your hybrid or or remote learning instructor. And we just don't have that capability at All Saints Academy. And and the second thing I would say to that is being in a public school district where where's where that is your school that has to provide some sort of education for you is a lot different than families who choose All Saints Academy for what we we offer. And right now, what we're offering is, of course, the in-person instruction with with remote capabilities. If we were all to go remote or if a full class were were to go remote, we would be able to do that along with being able to provide a lot of resources for if a student is homesick through Canvas so that they can stay caught up as best they can. Jill, with GRPS teachers being assigned to multiple schools, we going in and out of, including ASA. What we've tried to do, most of our teachers are are at All Saints Academy for the entire day. And we've gotten it switched in a couple of cases of of the teachers that used to be here for like a half day and then go to another school, that we've got them for the full day. And a couple of our teachers even, maybe just one. No, all of our teachers at least go to one other school. But but again, like we used to have Senior Garza all the time. He he does go to a couple of their schools. But again, we can't we can't have them all the time, every time, and and that will be detrimental towards our schedule if we couldn't. So again, we're going to try to limit people going in and out of the building as much as possible. So again, when when a teacher tests positive, the same thing. I think, Becky, that kind of flow chart is in the Kent County document. I think it's on page ten.
Maybe I, maybe I can elaborate a bit on that. Like I take away my husband for a second, just what are the substitute? Like, I'm assuming then a sub would come in, sit to the classroom for two weeks? Or would the whole class, like, does that mean the whole class would shut down and kind of what's the substitute policy? Because I'm assuming that there's going to be multiple substitutes, I would hope, available or kind of how does that work?
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to be real honest with all of you right now. If 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 staff members start testing positive, even if they're, so there's a couple of scenarios, right? So like, if 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 you or one of your children tests positive, that means Tim is at home like for a minimum of twenty-four days because of the ten days of isolation that he's got to be there with and then another fourteen of quarantining. Substitute teachers are going to be few and far between just because of people not wanting to go into schools combined with just the demand for more of them. So we're probably going to rely on, you know, Abby and myself trying to to do as as much as we can in those situations. You know, if if there's a difference between testing positive and being asymptomatic where you just can't come into school, but you're you're able to work. And and so that's probably looks something different where the teacher can still be remote with the students, whether those students are in the building or at home. Or versus the the teacher actually being sick and not really being able to do anything and really more of that looking like a long-term sub situation. So those are the things that, I mean, I, right now, I don't have a great answer, if an answer at all, but it's something that is continuing to keep us up at night. And we're talking about all the X, Ys and Zs of of what that playbook looks like. It's probably going to happen, and when it happens, it's not going to be good. I just hope that we can stay healthy. I really do. But my hope is that because we've got Canvas and we can continue to push out a lot of this content and and instruction to kids that way, that that can at least mitigate that a little bit. And when we talked about, I mean, sick days in terms of an HR thing, really got kind of going out over the window because you're you're not, you could have to be home for almost three weeks and not actually be sick and still producing a lot of work on behalf of the students or for the students. I'm sorry if that doesn't answer your question completely, but.
It doesn't, but it's okay.
Right now, in terms of of some of the differences between, you know, grades K two, three, five, six, eight, we're really going by requirements being requirements and recommendations being recommendations. So certainly, you can, you can send your your students with masks. You you're going to have to anyways because they're, they can't come into the building without them and they'll need them in public places. My guess is a lot of the kids will end up having masks. But in terms of making them a requirement, we're going to stick to the requirements of the Michigan State Safe Start Plan and and the recommendations.
Mister Stafford, I appreciate the question about equipment for footballs and recreation items. At the end of last year, most classes had their own supplies and we might have duplicates within our gym lockers. So stay tuned because we're going to figure that out first and then we'll let you know if there's more things that we still need in that type of a wish list wishlist category.
Yeah, so I'm seeing some of the things with the bias comments. Again, I anticipate a lot of the students to be wearing masks because as parents, hopefully we can really push them to wear to wear the masks in schools. As for us and talking to teachers are, again, it's a, it is a strong recommendation. So the more that they can model for those students and and strongly remind them and recommend them, it's just not something in terms of a requirement where it's enforceable. But we we will be strongly, any of those strong recommendations will be strong recommendations from the school side and hopefully from from the parents as well. I would love to see a culture where, you know, all, most, if not all, the students are wearing masks, again, because it's 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 a smart choice. But in terms of enforcing it, the requirements are the things that we can enforce. But in terms of enforcing it, the requirements are the things that we can enforce, the strong recommendations are things that we can strongly recommend.
Uh, I think that. I, I, I still have a problem with that. I think that if you want to make that a requirement. For those kids in grades three through five, because they are still in the middle school. I think that you can make that a requirement in your personal school. And I think that's probably the right thing to do. You can recommend all you like, but there's going to be kids that are going to take it off. And if it's required, there still will be kids that are going to fidget with it and they're going to take it off. But if it's required, I feel like there will be more kids. There definitely will be more kids that wear it all day long. And I think grade three, they can do it. Uh, I think that they can do it.
Yeah, I think that, and that's something that coming, you know, is why we do something like this. And, and seeing, um, comments and, and, uh. What parents would like to see, I think. We can certainly take that into consideration. And talk about it further, definitely. Same thing with the August nineteenth start date, I would totally be behind. If, if parents of All Saints Academy just feel like it's too soon. Um, doing my best to bring that to the diocese and talk about. If that would be a possibility.
I don't know if you were asking if you should bring it ahead, but if you were, I say yes. They, they might not know that parents are feeling this concerned about it unless somebody brings it up to them.
I think.
It's worth a shot.
So, uh, just curious, and you can chime in by unmuting or just add it to the chat. Are you, are, do you feel like just starting remotely then on August nineteenth? So that we can still have the same start days, be able to count those days, or are you saying not to start at all until a later date?
I could see starting remotely. And that kind of also fits in with what Mary was saying earlier too about. Letting the other people go back first and see how it happens. And then, so even if we have three, four weeks remote, I'm just throwing that out there. Everyone else is in school and then when it's safe, or maybe it's blown up and it's huge. Sorry, my dog. Um, either. We continue with remote learning or we can get back in the classroom, which of course is the ultimate goal. I need to go let her out, hold on.
Yeah, I'm seeing a lot of remote starts pop up in the. Nice Chris.
I think at some point you have to jump in. To the, it's just, it's going to be unknown whether you start. I know August nineteenth is, is coming up quickly. I mean, it's still a month away, but even if you delay. Sounds like a lot of people will be delaying, so whenever somebody jumps in, it's going to be unknown. So. I don't know that there's a. A perfect scenario, I mean. With a lot of things, but even so, the start date.
We, we really need to get back into school because you can always pull back to remote learning later. But the later in the year we get as kids and families and people are forced inside, that's when things are going to be worse. You get them back out in, in August, September, even beginning of an October, when people are still generally outside and separate. That's going to be better than trying to start back into a school routine when everything is going to potentially be much worse. And then you have to also look at the fact that there are probably most parents are back to work. You know, the stay safe order is gone. What kind of instruction are kids truly going to get when mom and dad have put in eight hours at work? And then are expected to come home and. Do more than just homework. I, I would be, you know, let's, let's get them back in. You can always pull back later.
Yeah, if you wait too long in terms of like, you run into flu season. And then everybody, I mean, flu season last year in terms of symptomatic. Situations, even in the first grade class. It was, there wouldn't be any first graders in the classroom. Just in, in some of the weeks, so get them outside, do classes when you can get, do them outside if necessary, like that kind of flexibility. In September, October, maybe a little bit of November. And then you have the ability to remote learn, you know, during flu season when. The symptom, the, some of the symptoms are going to be a little bit more prevalent. So there's going to be a lot of unknown versus asymptomatic carriers, things like that. Um, during the, the fall, the fall season.
Yeah, I do, I mean, our, I think when, when we go back to the spring and think about. Why it may have been easier to, to execute remote learning is because everybody was home. Under a phase four. That's not necessarily the case. Yes, we still have a handful of parents who are working from home, but. One, they are working and, and two, a lot of them are going back to work. Um, so whether their kids are in school, uh, they'll probably still need some sort of childcare. So I don't know, maybe there's an opportunity for us. To, to provide some remote instruction, but still, still have students be able to come. To school for childcare. That's something that we can certainly look into and investigate. But what I do appreciate is everybody. Coming together and, and just talking about this and seeing if we can't sort it out. This is good.
Um, I'm going to go up to Julie's question about. Video content for students that are either sick or home quarantining. Part of the reworking to Canvas. Um, is intended for us to be able to make sure that at least video content gets to quarantine students. Or students that are homesick. With possible smaller group Google meets during some of those planning times when our students have specials with teachers. The mechanics of setting a camera up in the back of the room and recording the whole day. Get tricky because I don't, I don't foresee a seventh grader turning on a camera for eight hours and watching. So what it comes down to is either scheduling. Um, in a teacher's scenario, when it makes sense to say there's a live feed going on at this time for the students quarantined at home. Or the recording of the content, whether it's a lecture or a class discussion will be made available. So that they can get caught up on that.
Maybe I missed it because my computer went out for a little bit. I forgot to plug it in, but is there? What are drop off? Like, what's the process for that for dropping them off? I, I mean, I just think about the fact like Tori's going to be a kindergarten or the idea of just dropping her off on. The first day and saying, see ya, will not go over well. So I just was just wondering what, what our plan is as far as drop, because I know they want less people in the building, but. I mean, you see the number of kids that come in with someone pulling them down the hallway to get them there, so just asking.
Yeah, um, you know, preschool families are still coming into the, to the building because they have to sign their kid. In and out, and that's worked pretty well for summer childcare. Um, I think that's something that we'll have to look at. I know. Uh, one of the things that we talked about, because there won't be an ice cream social, is being able to set up some times. To be able to come in and check out the classroom, especially for those younger or new students. Um, to kind of re, re relieve some of that anxiety of the first day. We. We'll just have to look at it. Um, I'm, I'm sure for kindergartners, being able to walk them in on, on day one to, to help them out. Probably won't be the worst thing in the world, but, um, I'd like to see and. Uh, and think about those numbers first before we just kind of open the floodgates. Uh, any, I don't have a breakdown for. The early childhood, I just got a, um. A large number for total enrollment. I'm not sure if Becky's kind of placed the kids yet in their classes. We, we usually don't do that towards the end of the summer when we have enrolled all of our preschoolers and because preschoolers. Seem to, to enroll all the way up until the first day of school. Um, but there are certain ratios. I don't know if Becky can chime in. Uh, on a typical class size for any given day, um, last year.
I am still working on the placements for fall. Um, currently, right now, our numbers are a little smaller. Than what they have been before, and it's all based on ratios and the size of the classroom. So we'll just have to see where it goes within the next couple of weeks. So when can we expect to hear more information? Cause clearly there's still a lot happening and evolving. So I'm just curious, it sounds like, um. Public schools are starting to let their people know. I know some people, some school districts are sending out like weekly emails. Having town halls. I'm just curious when we will know more, because I'd hate to go two more weeks without anything.
Sure. Well, I think this is super helpful in, in terms of. Getting more information and, and certainly will take time to talk to the dioceses and see what they think about. You know, a later start or remote start. Um, I would say by, certainly by the end of next week. Um, after we've had a chance to talk with teachers and, um, kind of. Put more into place what a, a typical school day or, or school week would look like. You know, I, I think by next week, uh, we'll have a little clearer picture and, and then by the end of the following week. Um, you know, now we're talking about. Two weeks, well, less than two weeks. Um, so finalized plans where you really understand or are able to understand. Um, what this, the beginning of school at least will look like, you know, I. I think that's what we're focusing on now is, is how, how we're going to open and how, how that's going to look versus, you know, long term. Um, so by the sixth or seventh, uh, is really kind of, I think that's the. The point of no return in terms of, there's no more tweaking to be able to be done after that. Other than, you know, if the governor comes out and says. Hey, we're in phase three and we're going back to remote learning. I think that's, that's probably the only change that would happen by that time. But I think you're absolutely right. So I'm going to work backwards a little bit till I get caught up. There haven't been really discussions regarding going to two to three days a week and remote the other days, just because of logistics. And you're still bringing, uh, kids in and out of the building. We're trying to get them back, you know, as consistent as possible for. For what we can either, either remote or, um, or in person. We have not had any issues with summer childcare so far. Which has been good because we do have a handful of essential workers that are going in, in and out of the hospitals and, and doing some work. In that regard, but, um, hopefully we can keep that streak going. Becky's been doing a great job with her staff. The, the preschool, um, handbook will include the same changes to. Uh, as the school handbook in regards to the, to the COVID stuff as it relates to preschool. Becky, I don't know if they have updated ratios, uh, in. In light of, uh, the COVID stuff.
The state has not changed any of the ratios, um, so I would assume we'll stick with the same ratios that they have. Like I said, some of our numbers are just naturally less than what they have been, so we'll just go with that right now. Are there a lot of changes coming in this handbook and is it mostly just COVID related?
Yes.
Is that something that? Maybe somehow require that parents read, whether it's like a. I don't know, like, if it's a, I, I read the handbook. And here's, here's my sign off on it, just because if it is so important. I mean, to be honest, I can't tell you the last time I read it cover to cover. I usually just look to see what I'm looking for. But if there's so much new, good stuff in there. How could we make sure that families are reading it and then therefore then that will help follow it?
Yeah, that's a good idea. I'm wondering if another one of these would be helpful after. Next week, after we're able to refine some of the plans and we roll those out. Um, if we want to continue doing these, I think, I think it's been great. I, I'm so happy. For the, um, just good respectful dialogue. I think most of us. Are, are, I, well, I know all of us are coming from the same spot and that's for the health and safety and protection of our children. As someone who sends their kids to ASA, I'm right there with you. Um, so I'm very encouraged by this community and just kind of. Um, kind of the great dialogue that happened tonight and would certainly be opening to, to doing this a, a couple more times. One at the, maybe at the end of next week, as we've tweaked a couple of things and then. Um, maybe one more around the sixth or seventh. Um, as we really solidify things and say, here's, here's where we're going, because, um, as, as Becky Matlack. Alluded to, there, there does need to be a, a time where we say this is what it's going to look like. And not wavering on changes and things like that. Uh, again, I think the biggest change to this community right now would be. You know, if we were, if we were to fall back into, uh. To phase three where we start the school. Kind of remotely on the governor's accord and not us. Um, but I can look into the diocese and, and see what maybe a little bit of a delayed remote start would be is, if that's even an option. Um, and we can talk about that further. Now I'll get better on scrolling down with the chat because usually I feel like it should populate and yeah, let's, I can certainly send, resend that survey out so that we can kind of add more questions or comments based on, on what we've learned with the documents. Again, the diocese and document just came out tonight, the Kent County document just came out Thursday. And then having this discussion right now, I think people, this probably prompted a lot of thoughts for people that I can even send out first thing in the morning while it's fresh. Actually, why don't we do this? I, I know where the, the timestamps are prior to this. If you go back, let me just send it on this link and then I'll send it to other parents in time, just a second. I would also ask, is it, is it better to keep it? I, I didn't put a I didn't add a, a place for a name, just because I didn't think it was very important. It wasn't to protect any kind of anonymity. Is it easier, is it, is it something we should put names to just so it's easier to go to that person to be able answer their questions better? If I know who asked the question or made the comment, it's, it might be easier for me to go directly to that person if I'm, if it's unclear or whatever. But let me know and I can just change that right into the comment or on the survey. Let me see. There's a survey right there. You can have access and I can send it out to the rest of the parent community tomorrow. Okay, if there's any other, and if there's not any other burning questions or comments, I think this, this was good. I think we, we learned a lot and, and we can definitely build on this. We do have a, a little bit of time, not a lot. But it's, it's, it'll be here before you know it, so we'll get to work for you. All right. God bless and take care. I'll stay healthy. Say hi to the kiddos for us.
Good to see everyone and hear from you.
You as well. Have a good one.
Anybody still here? Are there remaining questions?